My sister.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Yeah. But.
Is everybody mic'd up? We'll call the meeting to order. Madam Clerk, if you'd call the roll.
Okay, Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Ms. Pace-Nook.
Present.
Ms. Reclu.
Present.
Ms. Seibacher.
Present.
Mr. Shiverdecker.
Here.
Mr. Simmons.
Present.
Mr. Stone.
Present.
And Mr. Braun. Seven council members present, one absent.
All right, Pastor Williams is here to do our invocation.
Let us pray. Our heavenly Father, we rejoice and give you thanks for what you've blessed with and the community that is our home where we raise our families and do it with. For this, we are more grateful than we can put into human words. I'm thankful as well, Lord, for the folks that serve this city. And especially do I pray for the decision-makers and the wisdom, Lord, from heaven with so many issues facing our community. I pray, Lord, that you'll bless our mayor and councilperson, our boards and committees that work hard and tirelessly to keep our city functioning well and moving forward in a positive way. We want to pray, Lord, living in the heartland for our farmers who need a rain on their soybeans and corn and on their pastures. As much rain as we had, Lord, we're really dry right now, and I would ask you to find favor with those that are raising foodstuffs at any level, that you can bring a rain to our fields. I pray for those that are here from the community to participate in this session tonight, and I ask you, Lord, to bless the discussions and any decisions that are made, that they'd be pleasing to you. We lift up our city servants and continue to pray for those, Lord, who need day-to-day maintenance and care from the great physician. That would include but not be limited to Mr. Moore, Chief Myers, Mr. and Mrs. Reclu, and a host of other folks that need your presence and your love. Guide and direct this session tonight, and bless the work that's done here to your glory. We pray it in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen.
Face the flag. Attention, salute, and pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you, Pastor.
At this time, we'll take comments from visitors.
If you want to come forward, we'll give you five minutes. You just need to give us your name and your address. The council would not interact, but may address your topic at a later time. If you're here to speak on a public hearing, we're getting ready to do that coming up. Seeing no one come forward, we'll move on. We do have one public hearing, considering proposed amendments to the city zoning code relating to medical marijuana. The city council would consider changes to the following sections of Appendix A. Section 1, Definitions. Section 4, Use Regulations. Subsection 5, C-2 Commercial District. Subsection 6, C-3 Plant Commercial and CEM District. And subsection 8, M-1 Manufacturing District. The format will be as followed. I will issue three calls for anyone to speak in opposition, and then three calls for anyone that wishes to speak in favor. Again, we ask that you come to the podium, state your name, your address, and again, the city or the council will not interact with you. This hearing is now declared open. There will be three calls issued for anyone wishing to speak in opposition. First call, is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition of this matter? Second call. And third call. Seeing no one come forward, we'll move on to three calls for anyone wishing to speak in favor. First call, is there anyone present who wishes to speak in favor of this matter? Second call. And third call for anyone wishing to speak in favor. No takers. Okay, this public hearing is now closed, and we'll return to our regular agenda. Item 7, Approval of the Consent Agenda. Councilmembers may choose to remove an item for discussion prior to approving the agenda. The approved, there's one item on here, the approval of a request from David Beaver in the Brick District for the Brick District All Make and Model Car Show on Saturday, August 3rd, in downtown Fulton. The request has been reviewed by Chief Myers, Chief Kofelt, and the Brick District. The group plans to close the west portion of Court Street from 7th to 6th, and both sides of Court from 6th to 5th. The group will be responsible for placing, removing barricades, and an exit lane for CVS Pharmacy will be provided.
I make a motion, we approve the consent agenda is given.
Second. Have a motion in a second. Is there any more discussion on this? I'll call for the question. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no. That passes. We do not have unfinished business tonight. We do have new business. Clara Cannell will be here to present a request of fee waiver for a fundraising event to be held Friday, August 2nd, Memorial Park. It's your turn, sis.
Hello. I'm here to request that the council waive the pavilion and concession stand fee for the Memorial Park. I'm wanting to do a fundraiser for Sheila Richards. Sheila has been battling cancer for the past four years. Next week, she'll be getting a life-saving stem cell transplant, sorry, it's emotional, at Barnes. So, we're wanting to do a fundraiser. She's been able to work this whole time. With the stem cells, she's going to be in isolation. She'll be off at least three months, up to a year. We would like to raise some money for her. Any questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Anybody has no questions, you know my thoughts about this, but on this particular one, I would recommend that we waive the fee on it, but from this point out, we come up with new regulations, how we want to do it, and go back to our, what our ordinance says, that everybody pay the fee. But on this particular one at a short notice, I think I would vote to waive the fee for this last one.
Second.
We could put that on a work session again at some point going forward. Talk about that again.
This is a tough thing. We do it for one, we got to do it for all, but yeah, so.
She's been a nurse in this community for 20 years, and many family members probably on the council, so, you know, she's done a lot for the community. Still is, and has worked this whole time. But I understand.
Is there any more discussion or questions? Is it a conflict on the date? Do we know that?
Actually, the date, I don't have to do the second. It's kind of close. It can be any Friday here on out. I mean, I'm real flexible with what's available.
Talk to Clay, I guess, right? So, we have a motion in a second. If there's no more discussion, I'll call for the question. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no. Good luck.
Thank you.
Good luck. Thank you.
Airport fuel and hangar lease rate discussion. We did have a work session on this tonight. There's a lot to go over still, but I don't know if you want to kind of talk about anything.
Kyle's going to come up with some proposals and take them to the airport advisory board at the end of the month, so it'll probably be on the first meeting agenda in August.
We do have some general direction, I think, so that's a good thing. Council concerns. Councilman Shiverdecker.
I'm good, thank you.
Councilman Moore.
Well, I don't see Mr. Caswell. I guess he's on, someone said he's on vacation. I had two citizens call about the court in Carver Park, that it was tilting forward, and if there's something we could do to kind of smooth out the floor on the court, because it's separate. That's my only complaints I have, and I'm just waiting for my lights on Fourth Street.
Sure, we'll have Clay look into that.
Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Pace-Nook.
I have nothing.
Ms. Braunstein. Councilman Stone.
Actually, I have three items this evening. Councilman Moore reminded me of one. The basketball court over in Veterans Park across the street from the entrance to the country club was redone last summer, and repainted and all of that, but a fence was taken down at that time, and I'm wondering if the city could look at possibly replacing it with some sort of fencing. There is just.
Balls going everywhere.
Balls going everywhere. And it's disruptive, because volleyball nets are being used during the summer at the same time that the basketball courts are being used, and it's, the activities are disrupting each other. Before, when there was a fence, there was no disruption between the two activities.
So, there was a fence between the two fields.
Between the two fields, even if it's just something, you know, half the size of what it was before, just something to contain the activities. And maybe just on that one, I guess it'd be the west side, might be the only real need. I've been a member of the Safe and Affordable Housing Task Force for little over the past year as part of council, when we had the long discussion about inspections and safety inspections of rental properties and all of that, and what came from that is my participation in the Safe and Affordable Housing Task Force. On August the 6th, they've been, let me back up, they've been holding tenant forums, so tenants have been able to come together and discuss challenges and talk with, we've had different guest speakers come in and talk to them. Landlords have been getting together in similar forums to talk amongst themselves, and we've had guest speakers. And on August the 6th, we will hold our first joint tenant and landlord forum, and it was meant to, let's make sure there, we get some of the bigger challenges out of the way before we put these two groups together. But the one significant agenda item that will be on during that meeting will be the first draft of an inspection checklist. And it's not going to be something that's sponsored by the city, it's not going to be something that we're looking, it's going to be a self-governing type thing. The tenants will come together, they will decide what they think is a good safety checklist, and landlords will then also have opportunity, and it'll be a conversation, a discussion, and then they'll figure out what is, what's a good checklist amongst themselves. It's really become a good community growth opportunity, and for these two groups to come together instead of always being in battle.
Do we have a time and a place?
It will be at the Callaway County Library in the Friends Room. We're hoping to take full advantage of that environment, from 5:30 to 6:30 PM on Tuesday, August the 6th. And again, this is something that came out of a council meeting. It's something that I was appointed to as part of the council, so wanted to make sure that invitation came out to all of the council members. Also, at a previous meeting, we discussed Christmas lights. We've not had a, I've not had an opportunity to get together with any of the other community members that are interested in our Christmas lights that the city puts on, but I have been in contact with a couple of vendors, and if we are looking to purchase or replace any of our lighting, any of our decorations this year, then orders have to be placed by the end of August to get some of those stock items in. If we have custom items, we probably can't get them in by the 1st of December, but the stock items, if many of them carry, we'd have to have an order by the end of August. So, I will be reaching out to some community members, as well as some city employees and the administration, to kind of get this discussion going, to see if there is any immediate need that we need to address before the end of August.
Thank you, Mr. Stone. Councilwoman Reclu.
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Okay, Councilwoman Simmons.
The polls on North Business 54, looks like somebody missed the July 4th date that they gave you to have them gone.
I believe now it's July 14th or 19th. Charter polls on 54.
Yeah.
Yeah. Middle of July.
Okay.
That's, it's out of our, I don't want to say it's out of our control, but we don't have a whole lot of leverage on them.
Okay.
And I think that's pretty typical of cities and cable providers.
It should be nice for Helen to put that, we keep talking about charter being slow and.
Messing up our new aesthetically pleasing.
A less than desirable. Community citizen. Councilwoman.
Seibacher.
Yes, I have two this evening, one with Clay not here, we may not be able to talk about, but I have two young boys that were just involved in the summer youth baseball program. So, I was around a lot of parents, a lot, and I had several parents approach me and ask about the supplies that the city provides for the children to use. The condition isn't as great, I think, as some of them would like to see, so I'd really like to get some information on the age of those supplies. I know we talk about the rec center a lot and funds with Parks and Rec, but for some of us, that program is a big deal. So, I would really love to get some information on the supplies, the helmets, the shin bars, the supplies that we use for the kids. And then, secondly, we've not revisited the pitch competition information that was given out to us. Has anyone made a decision on that, or?
I can't hear you.
The pitch competition with the chamber, we talked about it through electronically just a couple of times, but then it kind of fell off. So, I just wanted to touch base on that and see if a decision had been made.
Yes. They had asked a couple of us to judge the pitching.
Oh, the judging.
The judges.
Okay, I was trying to remember what you were talking about.
We wondered if there was a decision. Yeah, that's all.
So, maybe we'll electronically revisit that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on, we've got resolutions. Mr. Simmons, if you would present Resolution 3346.
Yes, sir. Resolution number 3346, a resolution authorizing the mayor, on behalf of the city of Fulton, Missouri, to sign all necessary documents in relation to the GM Global Fire Prevention Grant and contingent upon the receipt of these grant monies, authorizing the city's monetary match. I make a motion that we approve Resolution 3346 tonight.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion on this? It's kind of a no-brainer, I guess, right?
Pretty much, yeah.
Hopefully.
I would point out, Kevin's not here tonight, but in speaking with him, I know his plan is to purchase five iPads and to get some updated software, so that way, when they go to do their fire inspections, they can actually take it with them and do everything. It'll sync with the city system, and so that's the goal, I believe, for this grant.
And this is, from what I read, this is limiting us to 1,000?
Yes. Yes.
Any more discussion on this? Got a motion in a second. I'll call for the question. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no. That passes to ordinance. Councilwoman Reclu, if you would present 3347.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Resolution 3347, a resolution authorizing the mayor, on behalf of the city of Fulton, Missouri, to sign all necessary documents in relation to a contract with Vander Vanton Engineering of Fenton, Missouri, for the renovation of Route O Lift Station. I make a motion that Resolution 3347 be, for voting tonight, this meeting.
Second.
Thank you.
Okay, we've got a motion in a second.
Just because of the size and scope of this project, and the expense involved, the time that's going to be involved, I'm going to ask Daryl and Kyle to come up and, not really give a sales pitch, but to give a justification as to selection and what the expectations are, we have going into this project at this time.
Yeah, Route O Lift Station, you guys know it's a pretty important lift station for Fulton. Daryl, I think, presented this to the utility board a week or so ago, and I don't know if you have any comment.
After the discussion, the utility board did recommend bringing us to the council.
The, what, what we're doing with this lift station is a major renovation overhaul, however you want to call it. We are trying to control costs by doing a lot of the engineering and heavy lifting and how. One of the selection criterias for, and why we're, why we would like approval for Vander Vanton Engineering is because they're helping us with my staff, along with Daryl with the layout and some of those engineering elements, as well as providing equipment. That's, that's one of the reasons why we feel that their bed best, their bed best fits our needs. We've also worked with them in a little bit in the past. They've done a lift station for us, I think it was Hilltop, is it Hilltop?
Oh.
Lift station in the past for us, and most recently, I think, accommodated Clay and a pool pump, so. They also provided a five-year warranty and also a two-year, for the first two years, biannually, they will service the pumps that are installed. So, there are several pumps involved here, so it's, that's a nice element. And then, the other thing that they offered that the others didn't was the electrical, electrical pump and controls installation. The others didn't supply that either, so.
All the programming and.
Programming and that type of deal. So, there's, though their bid is a little bit higher, it has more.
That's what I thought, it was a little higher than bid, but they're going to get, be getting a little more service, a little more secure.
What about this bill, anything?
I guess I'd be amiss of, and you guys would be disappointed if I didn't bring up the money.
Of course.
This contract was just a little under $400,000. We are going to spend probably another $300,000 to $400,000 of city funds on a new force main going over, doing some well improvements, doing some valve improvements. But what I'd like to point out, so even if we spend another $400,000, we're at $800,000, right? This was originally estimated by another consulting firm at $1.6 million. So, we're, we're looking at doing this project for 50 cents in the dollar of what a, so these two guys standing in front of you are bringing a lot of value to this town on this one project.
And knowing who's, yeah.
Right, because 1.6 was just too much.
And I think that's what we had in the budget for this year.
There's a million six in the budget.
Yes, yes, so that's, yes, definitely.
Okay? Because, and only, and the only reason it's at 1.6 is because we paid an outside consulting firm money to design, to preliminary design, and their estimate was 1.6 million.
Yeah, so, yeah.
Okay?
Pretty eye-opening.
Sure.
A lot of, a lot of hands in the pot when you get to go to this big engineering firms.
You guys did a great job, and I was scared of nothing.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
So, do we have any more discussion on that, or?
I think so, I don't know.
Call for the question. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no. That will pass on to ordinance. We've got our first reads. Councilman Stone, if you would, read 1548.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Before we go any further, before I, I own some commercial property in town, so I'd like to go ahead and recuse myself for the next three ordinances.
Absolutely. We'll send someone.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, and this is the first of the three ordinances that it will take for us to amend the zoning. Bill number 1548, an ordinance amending Appendix A zoning, Section 1, definitions, and Section 4, use regulations, Fulton City Code, by establishing zoning regulations relating to medical marijuana facilities. I hereby move to have Bill 1548 approved for first reading at tonight's meeting and go to second reading at the next scheduled council meeting.
Second.
Have a motion in a second.
After some discussion at the P&amp;Z hearing last night, a motion was offered by Ken McSwain and seconded by Les Hudson to approve the proposed amendment, amendments to the city's zoning code relating to medical marijuana and to recommend passage by the city council.
Okay. Do you mind finishing that out just a little bit more with the roll call vote?
Okay, roll call vote of members of the commission, words follow. Mike Ibel, yes. Les Hudson, yes. Pat Kelly, yes. Ken McSwain, yes. Joan Barry Morris, yes. Ronald Danny, yes. Lou Beatty, yes. Motion carried with seven members of the commission voting in favor and one member, Washington, absent.
And for the audience in attendance, this first ordinance is adding definitions to our building code for medical marijuana, the dispensaries, all the different pieces of language that have to be added into our building code is what this first one is for. It's adding those phrases and definitions.
Is this map that we got relevant to this?
Not to this first one.
Not to the first one? Okay.
The first one defines what a dispensary is, what a cultivation facility is.
And those are just.
All those different pieces.
And those are just taken from the state.
From the state.
From the state's information.
Yep.
Very good. Are there any questions or discussion on this? If not, I'll call for the question. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no. That passes on to second reading.
Second, okay.
And I believe council.
Councilwoman Seibacher.
Councilwoman Seibacher, if you would read this one for us.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Bill number 1549, an ordinance amending Chapter 22 Businesses Fulton City Code by incorporating an additional article relating to medical marijuana. I make a motion to place Bill number 1549 for second reading at the next regularly scheduled council meeting.
Second.
Have a motion in a second.
I would note, we're going to have a couple amendments to this one, which I outlined in that email that we sent earlier, but just so that way I can go over them in more detail, we're going to be looking to amend Section 22-235 in the copy you have, Section 10, Section 22-240, Section 2, and Section 22-245, Section 2. After talking with the attorney that the city has hired to draft these ordinance for, ordinances for us, we felt that we needed to better clarify how the city's going to measure that distance between structures, because there is some inconsistency with currently what the state has put out on how we can do that. So, what we've proposed in this new ordinance is just basically stating, the city, if, if allowed, will use the method that we currently utilize, and if the state has something that is different than that, obviously, the state law will trump what the city has on the books, so we'll go with what the, what the state has mandated. So, that's the First Amendment, which I know is a lot. And the second one is adding a new Section 5 to the end of this ordinance, which basically will just state that we're giving our codifier, which is MuniCode, the authority to go in and change section numbers and all those good things, because what Nathan has given us is a little inconsistent with what our current code already has. So, we're just granting them the authority to go in and change some numbers for the sections. They're not going to be changing any of the content. So, those are the two recommendations that I would make and ask that we get a motion to amend the ordinance as such.
Okay.
So, do that tonight or amend?
Tonight, if possible.
Yeah, tonight.
Do we do that now, in the middle of?
We can.
The ordinance, or do we do it after we approve?
Let's go ahead and just do it now.
And just.
The.
I make a motion to accept the amendments.
Second.
So, let's talk about the distance amendment. What we originally talked about was 500 feet straight line distance. What was sent to us earlier was, well, we'll measure distance based on our liquor zoning, which is also straight line distance. Now, can you, can you explain a little more, a little better?
They want you, the state, the state wants to measure it the way you walk.
I understand.
You walk out the front door, have to walk down to the intersection, cross in the crosswalk, and walk across.
It could, it could even be across the street from a school, depending on how you have to walk.
Well, at, at, at 500 feet, I don't see that being.
Well, it depends, it could be, but.
In theory, it could be, it could literally be across the street.
Right.
But we're going to take probably the most liberal view, if we have, if, if the state determines that we have to do the as-you-walk method, we'll incorporate it. But at 500 feet, you're still going to be quite away from anything.
I know Columbia, when they passed there, said 500 feet. They didn't tell how to measure it.
Well.
They just said 500 feet.
The way they walk, yeah.
So all of, what are we looking at saying? I guess that's what I want to?
We want, we, what are we doing? We're getting some buffer, whether it be 400, 600, depending on how you walk, whether you don't walk. We're looking at getting a buffer between a church, school, daycare, and a dispensary.
No, 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 it's not my question.
That wasn't the question.
Is what we're, what we're stating, and, and I apologize if I didn't make this clear. Based on what the attorney said last night.
Okay.
We're adding language into this ordinance to say, if the state happens to say we have to utilize the walking method, that's the method we will use, because that is what we'll be mandated to do. If, however, the state gives us the opportunity to use our structure-tostructure, sorry, our structure-tostructure measuring distance, then that is what we will use. That's what we currently utilize with what we're utilizing this. So this is basically just clarifying, even though I know it doesn't seem like that, that if the state puts a mandate out on how we can do it, we'll definitely go with what the state.
Keeps us from having to come back six months from now, go through this all again, because they change language in their.
Right, right now, the state says it will be legal walking distance.
Well, right now.
That's their July 1 revision of the law.
And that can.
So we're going to see some very specific words when we discuss this in two weeks?
No, you're going to see the same ordinance that you're seeing now.
No, but, but you're changing the wording.
Right, so we're changing it to what you've been given, or as of today, in the email, correct?
Uh, okay.
I can send you that email again if you need it.
I've got it. You didn't get it.
But basically, you're going to be seeing what you already have in front of you now with the additional language that says, "or as mandated by state law."
So is this after your email that said we were going to go by the liquor distance?
We already have a motion or a second.
Yeah, we have a motion, all right.
So was it, please resend it. I got the email about the liquor, comparing it to the liquor law, or the liquor zoning, but I don't remember seeing one.
She sounded like, you got it right there. Maybe you didn't get it.
Okay.
So what the ordinance will read?
Yeah.
Is that we are going to measure it structure-tostructure unless we are absolutely told differently between now and the end of the year. If the state says thou shalt measure it by walking distance, then it will be changed. Actually, the ordinance will stay the same, the code will stay the same.
Yeah, we can't choose. If they do that, we'll have to do it. This just keeps us from having to revisit this in six months.
Okay.
That's basically all it is.
Okay.
But we have two more reads, so if there's more clarification needed.
I got it. I didn't read it that way.
And then, for those in the audience, what this ordinance talks about is as we, the first one defined what the dispensary was and all these other facilities were, what we're talking about now, this ordinance, is about the businesses, what, what rules we're going to follow with medical marijuana businesses.
The dispensaries.
Then the next one that we'll read through talks about public consumption and use. So that, that's why there's three. One defines it, number two talks about how the businesses are going to conduct business, and then the third one will talk about how consumers will use it.
Very good. It's complicated.
So is there any more discussion on this? We have an amended motion?
We have a motion on the floor to amend it.
Okay.
Vote on the amendment, vote on the ordinance.
So I'll call for the question. All those in favor of the amendment, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no. That passes. Now we have a motion, bill as amended. Do we have a, we need a motion for that. Is that right?
Yes. A motion to approve the, the ordinance as amended.
Ms. Sabacher, does your motion stand as amended?
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Reclu, does your motion stand as amended?
Yes.
Thank you.
Wow, that was hard.
Okay, here we go.
So is there any more discussion on this? I'll call for the question. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no. Cool. Okay, Councilwoman Pace Snook, if you would present Bill 1550.
Certainly. Bill number 1550, an ordinance of the city of Fulton, amending Chapter 78 by enacting thereof five new sections, repealing Section 110-66, and enacting in lieu thereof one new section, all regarding marijuana and medical marijuana. I make a motion to place Bill number 1550 for second reading at the next scheduled council meeting.
Second.
Okay, and again, we're going to need to amend this one, to add a Section 5, which just allows our codifier the freedom to change the section numbers as they see necessarily. So again, we are not going to have them changing any content. They're just going to have the freedom to change those numbers. So we do need a motion to amend.
Move to amend.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any questions or discussion on that? I'll call for the question. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no.
Okay, Ms. Pace Snook, does your motion stand as amended?
Yes.
Mr. Moore, does your second stand as amended?
Yes.
You have a motion and second as amended.
Is there any discussion on the bill itself?
My only question is regarding the punishable by fines, not to exceed $100. How, how are the police going to know that the person that fails to produce the identification actually has identification and fines them correctly, or how do they know that they're actually supposed to arrest someone for having possession?
The officer will give them an opportunity to produce the card.
So they follow them to their house, they can go inside and get the card?
I think Chief Myers, yeah, kind of.
Yeah, that's, that's my main concern.
Kind of like the way you do your driver's license down?
You know, what is legal, what is not legal, it's going to be complicated.
Well, if you come in the quick shop, you, they don't think you're aged, you can't buy the cigarettes unless you go home and get your license, and if you don't take them with you.
Okay.
My question is, how is a police officer supposed to know that someone that's in possession of marijuana is allowed to have that marijuana if they don't have the card on them?
They have to have a card on them and all the cards, just like a driver's license.
So if, so if you get pulled over for any reason, or get stopped for any reason, and you have marijuana on you, but you do not have your card, then you get a ticket.
Then you go to court and produce your card.
And then you get the fine of the $100 versus?
Similar to your insurance.
It'll be up to the judge.
That's, okay.
None of the, the thing that a lot of people aren't understanding, I think, none of the present marijuana, marijuana or drug charges or, or ordinances or laws, either one, have changed at all.
Okay.
The only thing that is going to be in addition is the medical marijuana, and there'll be some stipulations of that. If it's not in the original container, that's a violation. And each store or, uh?
Dispensary.
Selling, uh, selling, has to have a specific container of some sort, whether it be a bag or something, but it'll have to be in a, in a container that it is sold in. And if it's not in that container, that's a violation.
So Chief, as a point of reference?
I just want to make sure that the right people are getting caught, I guess.
Correct.
If, if I were pulled over? If I were pulled over today and was found to be in possession of a small amount of marijuana, what's the process of the police officer?
Right now?
Do I, what, what happens to me today? If I were, if I were pulled over for speeding and was caught with a small amount of marijuana today, what's the process right now of a police officer?
You give them this demeanor.
Okay, I'd be, I'd receive a ticket.
Okay.
So that's the, so then I'd have to go?
If you're impaired, then?
Then that's completely different. But if, if I'm not impaired, I'm just found in possession, I, I receive a ticket, and then I have to go to court. And so then I would produce my card at that time, and it'd be up to the judge.
Yes, you have one, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Do your officers have pretty well grasped the changes and?
Wow.
It'll, also, I might add that I, I was at a, at a conference two weeks ago, three weeks ago. The person in charge of this for the state of Missouri was there. There was probably 150, 60 police chiefs there, so we had a lot of questions. Thirty percent of the questions that we answered, probably, he said, "I don't know, we're working on that." So it's, there's nothing really in stone. Things could change dramatically in the next few months. So there's supposed to be a database that we could access to find out who has, legally has a marijuana card. That's not in place yet. He doesn't, he didn't have an idea when that may be in place. They're going to try to get it during the process of handing out the cards. They have a lot of things going right now. One of the big questions, I think, was asked, was the growing facilities? If you have a 30,000-foot growing facility, you obviously can grow a lot of marijuana in 30,000 square feet.
Yeah, you can.
And so one of the questions, in fact, I asked the question, how are you going to know where that marijuana is, if it's going to a retail establishment, or is it going to the black market to be sold on the street? And he said, "Oh, we're going to try to have numbered lots in every facility, and then they're going to try, try to follow those numbered lots through the commercial sale of it." And I said, "What, who, who's in charge of overseeing that?" And he said, "We presently have three people hired for the whole state of Missouri, and we don't have any funds to hire anymore." So that's not happening.
Yep.
Three people can cover the whole state of Missouri. If you've got 50 or 30, uh, growing operations, it just can't happen. So they've got a lot of things they're working on, too.
A lot, yeah, yeah.
And they're trying to, you know, this was passed, and no one thought this through at all. And so now they're trying to play catch-up.
They're going to have to catch-up.
And it's probably going to take years.
Was there any discussion about reciprocity?
No, I?
Was there any discussion about reciprocity? Like Oklahoma's got medical marijuana, Arkansas has got medical marijuana, but both of them are, the requirements are totally different than what Missouri has.
That's right.
And Missouri will probably be, when the dust settles at some point, they'll probably be totally different.
Have their own, too, yeah, same as Colorado.
One thing that was pretty consistent, that every state that has approved this, their crime rate has went up. So that's been pretty consistent through all the states.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
There any more discussion or questions on this?
Not really.
I'll call for the question. All those in favor, as, do?
As amended.
As amended. As amended, say yes.
Yes.
And opposed, no. That is done, Daryl?
That is on to second room.
Okay, very good.
Do we need to get Rick?
Could you get Mr. Schibberdecker?
Oh, yeah, I forgot him.
Good thinking.
He's back there napping.
Probably thinks we forgot about him.
He did, he said he ought to wake up.
He missed out on the ice cream that we had.
Okay, moving forward, we have third reading, Bill number 1547. Councilman Schibberdecker?
Yes, sir. Bill number 1547, authorizing amendments to the city of Fulton budget for the fiscal year 2018, as outlined by Article 8, Financial Procedures, Section 8.8, Amendments and Adoption, Paragraph C, Transfer of Appropriations, Fulton City Charter, and Establishing an Effective Date. I make a motion that we advance Bill number 1547 for final approval at tonight's meeting.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Do we have any major adjustments to talk about?
No.
Is there any discussion or questions on this? If not, I'll call for the question. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no. That passes. We need to do our final roll call on this, is that correct? Okay.
All right, so you've heard that one read three times. If you'll please respond yes or no. Ms. Pace Snook?
Yes.
Ms. Reclu?
Yes.
Ms. Sabacher?
Yes.
Mr. Schibberdecker?
Yes.
Mr. Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
And Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Seven council members affirmative and one absent.
That bill is adopted. Thank you. Announcements, the next meeting will be held, the city council meeting will be held here Tuesday, July 23 at 6:30. I don't see any other announcements unless someone had one.
Mr. Mayor, I would just like to thank you, the citizens, for coming to tonight's meeting. It's wonderful to see you come and be an active participant, even if you are just listening to what's going on up here. We appreciate that, so thank you.
I back that up.
Even though this doesn't seem like a big, big crowd to you guys, it kind of is.
We're pleased, yes, that's like, wow, they're here. Thank you. Very good.
So if there's no other announcements, we do not have a need for executive session.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
All favor, let's go home.